Okay, welcome everyone to the Monday, April 7 caucus and work session and regular meeting of Albany Common Council. Mr. Jimenez, please call the roll.
Adams, present. Anani, Balleran.
Here.
Clark.
Here.
Conti.
Here.
Farrell.
Here.
Flynn.
Here.
Frederick.
Here.
Howie.
Here.
Johnson. President. Keegan.
Here.
Kimbrough.
Here.
Love.
Here.
Robinson.
Here.
And Zamer.
Here.
Fourteenth president, we're also joined by council president Corielis, city clerk Jenaqua Jackson, corporation counsel Robert McGee, research counsel Jake Geislin, legislative director Brian Amanez, junior policy analyst Alyssa Kamara, and ninth ward intern Margaret McCallum.
Thank you. So jumping right into the agenda for approval minutes from a previous meeting, be offering the March 17th of 2025 meeting minutes for approval. And on to local laws, both will be for amendment purposes, local law J of 2024 by council member Keegan, as well as local law L of 2024 by council member Anani. Those will both be for amendment only. Next, on to ordinances introduced. So ordinance two forty-one twenty-five by council member Balleran for introduction. It's ordinance restructuring the PEG access oversight board. Will be referral to the PEG ad hoc committee. It's restructuring that board. And next on to ordinance by Mr. Conti, it's three forty-one twenty-five. It's an ordinance in relation to cabarets and updating the city's entertainment licensing provisions. That will be a referral to council's planning committee. And next we have an item by, we're going to add by majority consent. This is from Mr. Williams. He spoke about it at our caucus. It's by Ms. Frederick. It's four forty-one twenty-five. It's in relation to providing an easement for the expansion of a pipeline down on Mill Road at the farm. It's a refer, it's going to be a referral to the finance committee. The next, we have under ordinances held by Ms. Farrell's twenty-four eighty-one twenty-four. It's pending amendment. It's the active transportation ordinance. It'll be amended and then be under consideration depending on what we decide.
So just as a clarification, we are voting on that tonight, are we not?
Yeah. Yeah, I said pending, pending amendment and then under consideration. Next, moving on to resolutions introduced by Mr. Balleran. Resolution twenty-foury-one twenty-five, it's resolution to council endorsing the expansion of access to rent stabilization through Rent Emergency Stabilization for Tenants Act, the REST Act. It's support for that and a resolution endorsing that. We'll be considering and voting on that tonight.
Kelly? Just make a, I mean, I do some, still have some questions on exactly what classification of buildings it applies to, but.
Is your mic, is your mic on?
Uh huh.
Is your mic on?
Yeah, yeah. But one of my concerns is I, when you're, when you're, maybe at least, when you're voting on resolutions that are endorsing a specific piece of state legislation, it's the same as voting for that piece of state legislation, which you really have no control over. And I, you know, I think resolutions like this should go through a policy committee where questions can be asked and or, you know, the policy discussed. So I will be voting present on that, and I think as a rule on resolutions like this, I'm just going to be voting present on that one, as well as the other one that's later on the, on the agenda, because I just don't feel comfortable voting on state legislation when we don't really go through a policy discussion to understand what we're voting on. I mean, I understand the concepts, but we're voting on something specific as opposed to an idea. So just, just to explain where I, how I feel, what I'm doing on that one.
Thank you, Mr. Conti. Mr. Robinson, did you have your hand up? No? Does anyone else have any questions about that last resolution? No? Mr. Adams?
I share Richard's sentiment.
Okay. All right. Yeah, go ahead.
I respect my colleagues concerned with that. I know this is something we've done in the past, where we've supported resolutions in certain bills, and yes, we have no control over those bills, but at least we're making a statement stating this is, these are ideas we'd like to have move forward. As you negotiate those issues, please know that we'd like for that to occur. I mean, right now, you know, this is in its, it's a new bill, so it's in its infant status, we can say, but it's something that we as a body have dealt with for several years now. So it's not new to us, it's just different opportunities. And I would rather us discuss and debate a finished product, but that's not what we have in front of us. Eventually, hopefully, we will, and then we can have a much more deeper conversation as one, if this is something we'd want to have for our city, because this would just give us the option to have that debate without some of the barriers that we found over the last few years. And two, you know, what are the thresholds that we'd want? Unfortunately, we're not able to have those discussions right now, because we don't have, you know, this bill passed, and we have a lot more barriers to even have a conversation of whether we should have this or not. So I do, I do hope that the state can come up with a negotiation and a, can come up with a compromise, you know, but this is what we have in front of us, and, you know, this is something that we've been trying to have an open conversation about for years. For years, we've been trying, we've, we've had open conversations about trying to get the vacancy study funded, having vacancy studies done, and then actually having the vacancy study done. We've had that for years, and we've been discussing the vacancy study versus discussing the need in our city, as well as should we, shouldn't we have this type of system in our city? So, you know, I, I hope my colleagues can look at the need that we're seeing in our city and how supporting a bill like this, supporting a compromise on a bill like this can help move some of the issues that we've been trying to deal with for years, move them forward.
Mr. Johnson?
So I would just like to offer that I agree with Councilman Balleran, and we have to also recognize that we're in a different position than we were last year at this time on the state level. We now have a former colleague of ours that is involved in that conversation, and in the past, we have done stuff like this before, supporting what's going on on the state level, and we just have to be mindful that we can support our elected official by being in front of this stuff even more. So I will be supporting this. Thank you.
Okay, all right. So again, we'll be moving on with, with voting and considering that, and if members have concerns, they can express those with their, their vote, I guess, you know? Next, resolution introduced by Ms. Love's twenty-two forty-one twenty-five R. It's resolution to council declaring April 2025 to be Minority Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Albany. We'll be voting on that. I believe we, we're all going to be co-sponsors on that. The next resolution by Mr. Clark's twenty-three forty-one twenty-five R. It's a resolution to council supporting the passage of New York State Legislature's Healthy Homes Right to Know Act, which requires the display of certain labels and warnings on gas stoves. Moving forward with that and voting on it. Next, by council member Balleran, resolution twenty-four forty-one twenty-five R. It's a resolution of the council recognizing and celebrating April 2025 as Arab American Heritage Month in the City of Albany. We'll be voting on that. And next, I'm, I'm not looking, so if someone has something, just you gotta blurt it out. It's council member Keegan's twenty-five forty-one twenty-five R. Resolution to council commemorating April of 2025 as Autism Awareness Month. I believe we're all co-sponsors on that. The next resolution twenty-six forty-one twenty-five R by me. It's a resolution to common council remembering and honoring William Henry Johnson's legacy. We're all co-sponsors on that. And lastly, resolution twenty-seven forty-one twenty-five R by me. It's a resolution to common council acknowledging the week of April 6th through the 12th as National Crime Victims Week, Victims Rights Week. We're all co-sponsors on that. Is it for that? Then we, we have a commissioner of deeds also. We got one for that, and then that would be it for the agenda. Did I miss anything? I don't think I did. All right, got a couple of minutes before we, we start, so. Don't look too far. And remember to turn your mic off. We'd like to call, we'd like to call the order. Monday, April 7th, 2025, Albany Common Council meeting. Can the clerk please call the roll?
Adams.
Present.
Anani.
Present.
Balleran.
Here.
Clark.
Here.
Conti.
Pr-.
Farrell.
Here.
Flynn.
Here.
Frederick.
Here.
Howie.
Here.
Johnson.
President.
Keegan.
Here.
Kimbrough.
Here.
Love.
Here.
Robinson.
Here.
Zamer.
Here.
Fifteen present.
Thank you, and will you please rise with me and say to pledge allegiance, and after that, a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic, where it stands, my nation under God, in the great cold, liberty, and
Now we'll move on to our next item of our agenda, which is public comment period. Due to the number of people who have signed up tonight for public comment, we have to cut it a little bit short, so we make sure that everyone gets a chance to be heard. So instead of five minutes, public comment period will be four minutes. When you come, you have the right to talk about any issue and anything you like for four minutes. The light will turn green, you go. Yellow means you have one minute remaining, and red means stop. At the time of your public comments, the county, the common council members cannot answer any of your statements or questions at that time. They cannot respond to you during public comment period, so you just, you know, you can address myself as the chair, address me and not council members. And if council members choose to respond to your statements, they can do so at a later time during the agenda. When you come, just state your name for the record and then begin speaking. So with that being said, can the clerk please call the first speaker?
Hi, my name is Dr. Brenda Robinson, born and raised here in Albany, and thank you for having me. I first want to thank Honorable Joyce Love and all the co-sponsors of the resolution designating the month of April as Minority Cancer Awareness. Awareness of disparities in healthcare is very important, but more importantly, acknowledge the racism in healthcare and other barriers that impact health equity. We know that black people and other people of color have the worst health outcomes of almost any disease that you can think of. Looking at breast cancer, black African-American men have the highest rate of prostate cancer. Cervical cancer, black women and Hispanic women have the highest rates of cervical cancer, black African-American women having the highest. In 2018, black women were thirty percent more likely to develop cervical cancer and sixty percent more likely to die from cervical cancer than non-Hispanic white women. In 2024, St. Jude did research noting, black women are now forty-one percent more likely to develop cervical cancer than white women, and now seventy-five percent more likely to die from it. Black women are also diagnosed at later stages with cancer and other diseases, which makes our lifespan a lot shorter. Mortality and death rate, black people, African-Americans, have the highest death rate and the shortest survival rate for most cancers in the United States, more than any other group. Looking at breast cancer, although black women have a lower incidence of breast cancer, we all die at a higher rate. These are disparities. We need awareness. Lung cancer incidents and death rates are highest among black men. Among women, American Indian and Alaskan Native women have the highest incidence of lung cancer, and they also have the highest rate of smoking as well. When we look at another cancer, colon cancer, black people die forty percent more than white non-Hispanic people, higher than any other racial group, right? We need awareness. Forty-five is a new fifty when it comes to colon cancer. Do you know that colon cancer is preventable? A lot of people don't know that. We need awareness. Some of those barriers, poverty, racism in healthcare, skepticism in that mistrust, and we know where that comes from, financial barriers, substandard housing. Housing does impact how you take care of yourself. It's a huge impact. Health literacy deficit, lack of screenings, like that forty-five is a new fifty, we need that education, we need that awareness. Lack of cultural competent providers, lack of diversity in healthcare, lack of people who look like me taking care of me. I know me better than anybody else. What can we do? Having trusted messengers, cultural competent care, acknowledgement of racism in healthcare, and we need to act and use an equity lens. Funds directed at programs and organizations that are doing the work, advocacy, meeting people where they are, and partnerships. Partnerships are so important. People don't have to look like you to work with you and make things happen. So please, I would just want to thank everyone who's signing on to this resolution. It's so important. It's more than just awareness, we have to act and work together. Thank you.
Thank you. The clerk, please, next speaker.
Tim Guinea.
My name's Tim Guinea. I'm very excited to speak after the doctor did, because the bill, I'm going to speak on the resolution twenty-three forty-one twenty-five R, has a direct impact in terms of environmental justice and medical inequity. That resolution lifts up a bill called the Healthy Homes Right to Know Act. The Healthy Homes Right to Know Act recognizes that the American public studies show are unaware that all gas stoves emit four toxic combustion byproducts that are deleterious to human health. What the bill suggests is labeling new gas stoves to create education, to let people know about those four off-gases. The gases are benzene, which the World Health Organization recognizes no allowable threshold of exposure to. It's that toxic carcinogen. Formaldehyde, which is also carcinogenic, carbon monoxide, which sends a hundred thousand Americans to hospital every single year, according to the CDC, and nitrogen dioxide, which is an exacerbant to asthma, and many studies now think is causal to the formation of childhood asthma. One study suggests eighteen point eight percent of pediatric asthma in New York is caused by emissions from gas stoves. These emissions do not affect all communities equally. Nitrogen dioxide exposure in indigenous American communities is sixty percent greater than it is in the baseline population. Hispanic adults have more asthma, current asthma, than anyone else. Black adults are twice as likely to die as white adults from asthma. Black children are eight times as likely to die from asthma as white children. One new study shows that low wealth individuals are much more strongly affected by this, because the concentrations of gases in the domiciles they're living in is greater. A new study out of Harvard shows that women are much more profoundly affected by this than men, presumably because in 2025, women are still doing the lion's share of the cooking. So this bill is not a ban on gas stoves, it's simply an attempt to create education. It is a moral opportunity for the legislature to educate the public so that they can make good choices. You guys voted a resolution of support for the bill through last year, and I'm deeply thankful to this body for doing that, and hope you'll do it again this year. Thank you for your time and your service.
Thank you. Can the clerk please call the next speaker?
Crystal Harris.
Hello, thanks for having me here tonight. My name is Mauro McNulty, I live in Albany, I'm in Melrose neighborhood, and I'm here tonight to ask you to pass a resolution of support for the Healthy Homes Right to Know Act. I'd like to mention my own personal story this evening, not because I think it's unusual, but actually because I think it's pretty typical, so I think there's things that we can all learn from it. In the late 1980s and early 1990s, we were living in a rural area and entirely reliant on oil deliveries.
In the late 1980s and early 1990s, we were living in a rural area and entirely reliant on oil deliveries. So when we bought our house in Albany in 1992, we were excited about switching to what we understood was much cleaner natural gas. Over time, I've learned that natural gas is actually composed largely of methane, which is an extraordinarily damaging greenhouse pollutant. I've since switched over to an air-source heat pump, but my gas stove remains. When I first started hearing that gas stoves are damaging human health, I thought, oh, come on, how bad can they be? They're stoves, and plus, I don't use mine very often, I figured. But then I started reading, and one thing I learned is that gas stoves release nitrogen dioxide. Harvard's T.H. Chan School of Public Health published a study last year that found that Americans who cook with gas or propane are likely to be regularly breathing in unsafe levels of nitrogen dioxide, as established by the EPA and the World Health Organization. Nitrogen dioxide is linked to a whole range of respiratory issues, including asthma and other lung diseases. My younger daughter's asthma cleared up once she moved out of the house for college. I don't know whether her asthma was triggered or worsened by our gas stove, but if I had known then what I know now, I would certainly have gotten a different stove. A recent NIH study showed that the majority of the methane emissions from stoves are happening while the stove is just sitting there. The same study calculated that annual methane emissions from all gas stoves in the U.S. homes have the climate impact comparable to the annual carbon dioxide emissions of 500,000 cars. That is a lot of pollution inside our homes. I've also learned recently that gas stoves emit carbon monoxide, carbon dioxide, formaldehyde, and benzene, a known carcinogen. We don't have time to go into the health impacts and health costs of each of these chemicals, but again, I sure wish I'd known this stuff before I bought a gas stove. Because women continue to do the majority of cooking in U.S. households, women are disproportionately exposed to the whole range of gas stove emissions. And because very small homes accumulate and concentrate more stove fumes than very large ones, those who likely live on the lower end of the income ladder also experience disproportionate impacts. All of this is to say, I dearly wish the warning language, as proposed in the Healthy Homes Right to Know Act, had been available when I redid my kitchen a dozen years ago. If a manufacturer is producing a product that is manifestly damaging to our health, it seems to me that they at least have the obligation to make that damage clear. And as consumers, don't we have the right to know the essential facts of the products we're buying? I appreciate your attention and all the hard work you do on our behalf. Thank you.
Thank you. Can a clerk call the next speaker?
Monica Jones.
Hello, my name is Monica Jones. Happy to see everyone's faces tonight. I'm going to be talking about how poverty and homelessness are intertwined. I received an email a few weeks ago from a local organization. One in four people in Albany and in the capital region experience poverty. Poverty and homelessness are deeply intertwined, with poverty being a major contributing factor to homelessness due to the inability to afford basic necessities, including housing. Lack of affordable housing, low wages, unemployment, systematic issues like discrimination also play a significant role. Inability to afford housing, low income. Individuals and families with low or unstable incomes struggle to meet basic needs, including housing, food, transportation, and healthcare. Lack of affordable housing, a shortage of affordable housing options, especially for those with low incomes, exaggerates the problem, leaving people with few choices. Housing costs. High housing costs, especially in relation to income, can lead to housing instability and the risk of homelessness. Systematic structural factors, unemployment and underreemployment. Lack of employment opportunities, low wages, and unstable employment can trap individuals in poverty and increase the risk of homelessness. Discrimination. Systematic discrimination based on race, ethnicity, gender, or other factors can limit access to employment, housing, and other resources, further contributing to poverty and homelessness. Lack of access to social safety nets, insufficient safety, excuse me, insufficient social safety nets, such as public assistance programs, can leave individuals and families vulnerable to poverty and homelessness. Mental health and addiction. Mental health issues and substance use disorders can also play a role, often stemming from poverty and lack of opportunity can make it difficult to maintain stable housing. Childhood trauma. Early life experiences such as neglect and abuse can have long-term consequences impacting education, employment, and the ability to maintain stable housing. Lack of access to healthcare. Poor health can lead to job loss and increased healthcare costs, further straining finances and potentially leading to homelessness. Consequences of poverty and homelessness, health problems. Homelessness and poverty can lead to a variety of health problems, including malnutrition, exposure to the elements, and increased risk of infectious diseases. Educational disparities. Children experiencing homelessness are more likely to face educational challenges, including lower academic achievement and higher rates of suricy. Trauma. Living without stable housing can be a traumatic experience, leading to mental health problems and other challenges. Social isolation. Homelessness can lead to social isolation and disconnection from family and community support networks. Increased risk of victimization. Individuals experiencing homelessness are at higher risk of being victims of crime and violence. Thank you.
Thank you. Can a clerk call the next speaker?
Bridget Savage Spies.
Hi, my name is Bridget Savage Spies. I live on 32 Van Schuit, and I'm here to talk in support of the Ida Yarborough tenants and their formation and their tenants' union. The Ida Yarborough tenants have been fighting for safe housing conditions for a while now. They've been to the Housing Authority and seen some improvements, but overall, they are still living in conditions that most people here would deem unacceptable. The people at the Housing Authority would deem unacceptable if they were forced to live in conditions like that. And I think that if you are someone who is saying that you are providing housing to people as a landlord, if that is what you're doing, you are receiving money in exchange for housing, then that housing has an obligation to be acceptable. It has an obligation to be safe, to be good for people's health. And so far, the housing in Ida Yarborough is not that, as is evident by several pictures that tenants have brought with them today of some of the conditions that they're living in. And I don't think anyone here would find it acceptable to live in conditions like that, so there's no reason that they should. Thank you.
Thank you. Can a clerk call the next speaker?
Roger Downs.
Good evening. Thank you for taking public comment. I'm Roger Downs. I'm the Conservation Director for the Sierra Club Atlantic Chapter. We would like to uphold and thank you for supporting the Healthy Homes Right to Know Act and certainly encourage you voting in favor of the resolution. I think the previous two speakers sort of covered a lot of the science, and I think that's important. I just want to reiterate, this is not anyone coming for gas stoves. This is merely an informational label that would be put on any gas stoves for sale in New York so that the public understands the risks that they are taking on when they purchase the stove and the risk to air quality. I want to say that, you know, the Sierra Club did a study in the Washington, D.C. metro area. We were particularly interested in nitrogen oxide because, as previous speakers have said, this is directly linked with childhood asthma. You know, the notion of the Rocky Mountain Institute suggests that if New York were to not have gas stoves in the homes, there would be 18% less childhood asthma. And for me, that has a personal connection. When we went into a little under 700 homes in the D.C. metro area, we found that 63% of the homes had two times the amount of nitrogen dioxide that the EPA finds acceptable for outdoor air quality. This is indoor air quality, and we're now finding, post-pandemic, that Americans spend 90% of their time in home, inside the home, not outside, inside their homes. And as our homes are getting more and better insulated, the air quality impacts from gas stoves only increase. I will only say that I built my own home just south of Albany County, and I tried to build the most ecological home I could 20 years ago. And when it came time to purchase a stove, I chose a gas stove because it's what I grew up with. I sort of had this notion of cleanliness. And it's funny to hear the previous speaker because that was my exact experience as well. I raised two children in that home. Both had really bad asthma issues. And I, you know, we had inhalers. We took them to doctors. It never occurred to me that it was because I had a gas stove in the home. I know it's anecdotal, you know, we didn't have the tests out. We didn't have scientists with monitors on my kids. But when we were researching this bill two years ago, I was horrified. I ripped the stove out. I got an induction stove, which works great, and it's wonderful. And it's a completely different, but I think far superior way of cooking now that I've sort of gotten over my love for the blue flame. And both kids, they don't need inhalers anymore. I mean, granted, they're teenagers. Kids grow out of things. But anecdotally, I would say it was a night and day situation for us. Anyway, thank you for supporting this legislation. Again, it's public education, but had I known this 20 years ago, I would have made different choices. Thank you.
Thank you. Can a clerk please call the next speaker?
Tom Ellis.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Tom Ellis. I live on North Pine Ave in the city of Albany. And I'd like to encourage the city to, now that the weather's getting better, to start striping the streets in the city, get the crosswalks painted. The crosswalk on the corner, Allen Street and Washington Avenue, was like a ghost crosswalk. It's pathetic how bad it is. Lots of kids cross that street twice a day. The crossing guard told me a few times lately that she's terrified that either she or somebody, the kids, are going to get killed there by cars that are flying along Washington Avenue. I'm sure there's plenty of other places in the city that need crosswalks to be painted more frequently. I'm going to talk to you again about community water fluoridation. So regarding community water fluoridation, one aspect of the disagreement that we anti-fluoride water protectors have with the Common Council majority is that I have not heard you address some of the issues we have repeatedly raised. For example, nearly all of Europe has rejected community water fluoridation, and for a variety of reasons. Individual nations or regions thereof that fluoridate can, of course, be identified, but this does not negate the fact that 97 or 98% of Europeans have chosen to not fluoridate their water. Many nations in Europe have longer life expectancies and lower infant mortality rates than we do in the United States. A second issue concerns the book, The Case Against Fluoride. I gave a copy of this to the council more than a year ago. It was my hope to provide each of you with a copy, but I could not locate them. Did any of you who voted for the fluoridation read or skim it? Was the totality of the information contained therein sufficient to cause you to question the safety of community water fluoridation and either reject water fluoridation or call for a postponement or a moratorium on community water fluoridation? And the third issue is informed medical consent. I assume that all of you have signed medical consent forms, probably multiple times, and if you have children, you have signed for them. I assume most of you have told a physician or a dentist that you will decline a recommended medical course of action or medication. In New York, we are required to consent to medical treatments we desire, and we also have the right to refuse unwanted medical treatments, and this is how it should be. However, with community water fluoridation, these two rights are taken away from us. The right to knowingly affirm and the right to refuse treatment. And they're taken away from people who would be drinking fluoridated water multiple times daily, perhaps for decades. Community water fluoridation is a forced medical treatment, and that's how it was presented here, until some of us started criticizing it. When are you going to address this issue? And please do not tell me that community water fluoridation is not a medical treatment, but some form of a nutrient. Please do not ask why we do not oppose water chlorination. Let's focus on community water fluoridation. Let's avoid any distractions or linguistic obfuscation. Please deal with this issue head-on. Why have the majority of you voted to disregard our medical rights? Thank you. And I have a fact sheet that I'm going to hand to the city council here. It's fluoridation's neurotoxicity, and it was created by the Fluoride Action Network, and it was updated as recently as February. And it says, "On September 24th, 2024, a federal judge ruled after a seven-year science-based lawsuit that fluoridation poses an unreasonable risk of reduced IQ in children. It ordered the EPA to take action to eliminate this risk." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. Can a clerk call the next speaker?
Bevan Francis. Tom, you can give it to Brian.
No, they're going to get copies. They're going to have them in their mailbox.
Hello, my name is Bevan Francis. I live at 57 Garden Street in Albany. I'm here to talk about the Ida Yarborough Tenant Union. But quickly, I just want to thank council members Ballerin, Adams, and Keegan for your resolution for the REST Act, as somebody who's been working on that bill from the inception and named it. Now, as far as the Ida Yarborough Tenant Union goes, I'm a tenant organizer with United Tenants of Albany, and I can tell you that I've worked with many tenants across the city of Albany and even in other cities. And the folks living at Ida Yarborough are living in the worst living conditions that I have ever seen. I've been in, I spend a lot of time at Ida Yarborough and with the tenants there. And there is mold, there is pest, there is feces, there is urine. There's bullet holes, as you can see in the photos, in the windows and in the walls from when people were killed. And aside from them living in the worst conditions that I have ever seen, they also have the strongest sense of community and solidarity of anybody I met, of anybody I've worked with. They are so strong and just so passionate about being a community together. They just want access to their community room. They want access to their kitchen. They want clean and safe living conditions, and most of all, they want a safety officer. We met with Albany Housing Authority officials this morning. We went over our demand letter, 13 demands, and they agreed to give us, they asked for about 30 days to meet most of those demands. But as far as it came to the safety issues, the utilization of cameras, and implementing a safety officer or a security officer, we were told that it is Ida Yarborough's tenants' union responsibility to figure that out for themselves. Yeah, that was my expression too. We don't know. This is a very blurry line. We're not sure who's responsible for our tenant's safety because, you know, New York State law regulates that landlords are responsible for tenant's safety. And so we believe that it's Albany Housing Authority that is responsible for the tenant's safety. But we're told that because folks owe back rent, that it's just not in the budget. We've been told to put the pressure on Albany Police Department ourselves to fight for a safety officer ourselves. So we're asking for the support of this council to hold Albany Housing accountable to their commitment to meet the demands that they've agreed to meet. But also, it's time for them to step up and provide security for the folks at Ida Yarborough. Thank you.
Thank you. Can a clerk call the next speaker?
Michelle Denson.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Pardon me when I speak. I went through brain surgery, so my breathing is a little off. My name is Michelle Densler, and I am pretty much born and raised Albany, New York, so I've seen a lot come and go. As far as like the building that I've been residing in, which is Ida Yarborough, for about 20 years, I've seen a lot of ins and outs there, seen the difference. And we pretty much are just doing our part as far as tenants go, paying our bills, those sorts of things. So, you know, it would be only right to play their part as far as keeping the conditions up and those sorts of things, safety and all that good stuff. I have obviously been a witness to a lot of criminal activity over there, as far as murders, you name it. And it's, it blew me out, but, you know, I'm here to just continue to push. And it's, it blew me out, but, you know, I'm here to just continue to push forward and I figure I speak out, you know. It's my first time here, so I just hope, you know, for anyone in here to pretty much just do what's right. There's no questions asked. Can't go around that, beat around it. But I appreciate everybody in here, and I hope things change for housing period, whether it's New York, any other city, state. I'm pretty sure there's a lot of issues elsewhere also. So that's all we're asking for. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kimbrough, we've reached our 30-minute time period. So we, we only have a few more people.
Yep. Motion to extend 30 minutes, public comment 30 minutes.
Second. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes to extend public comment period. Can a clerk please call the next speaker?
Zaitali Vasquez. Hello, everybody. My name is Zitla Liwaskis. I live in the Pine Hills area. And forgive me, I cannot see. I just broke my glasses. But I'm here in, to support the Ida Yarborough Tenant Union. As you guys have already heard a little bit of what they're talking about and seeing the pictures, their living conditions are not acceptable. I think we are exhausted to have to continuously fight for basic necessity, for decent housing. And that's why we're here, because we just are asking for your support. Help us support our cause. When we're talking to the Albany Housing Authority, they are not being as, as open to what we're talking about, what we're demanding, which again is just our basic necessity for housing. And then I just wanted to make that quick because I don't live there, so I don't have to experience that. But I would not want to, and I'm sure none of you would want to experience living in those conditions either. And I also want to mention that please support the REST Act because our lives are on the line when, when it comes to rent stabilization. Your profits might be on the line, but our lives are on the line. Thank you.
Thank you. Can a clerk call next speaker?
Mark Harvey.
Hello, everybody. My name is Mark Harvey. I'm a resident of Albany, New York all my life. I wanted to speak about the concerns of the building, safety. And there's no safety over at that building at night. People come there from the homeless shelter, sleeping on the staircase. I'm implementing for cameras on the staircase. How many? Three people have got shot, killed. Numerous people have got stabbed in the stairwells. Sex, people walked in, people having sex on stairwells at all hours of the night. You're scared to go out your house to empty the trash because of rats, roaches in the hallways. It's just a mess. And we're just asking Albany Housing to help us clean up some of the mess that they created over years. The great, great, grand rat is living there from the first people that lived in that building. The building is terrible with rats, roaches, feces, and violence. Violence. People coming from other places to do their violence there. A man just got, walked up to him and got shot and killed in the hallway, right there in front of people. And they got their cameras to see it. But nothing's being done but security. We need to secure the building, first of all, and then maybe some of the smaller issues can be helped. And, you know, and, you know, I just wish your support and things could change. Maybe we can meet with the police commission because Albany Housing is saying it's not their responsibility for security. They saying it's the police, you know? But if it's not emergency, the police is not going to come tell. If it's only emergency, unless somebody died or other than that, they might come an hour or two hours later, you know, to, to report somebody's in the hallway or doing something that they don't want supposed to be doing. You know, the only, only they come unless somebody is getting killed in emergency. I thank you for your support, and that's all I got to say.
Thank you, sir. Can a clerk call the next speaker?
Tamara Holland.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Tamara Holland. I'm a native of Albany. I've been here 60-something years. I'm a resident of Ida Yarborough, and I've been here for 12 years. And my main concern is the safety of our building. And as you can see, we have ants because we had a flood, and they never pulled up the rug to try to rectify the insect, the bugs that's coming in there. Then we got the bullet holes. We have the mold. And I think, because I have a respiratory problem, I think that's why, because of this mold that we have in the building. And then we got urine on the floors. We have urine in the elevators. We have urine in the stairwells. We have feces everywhere, like, and it's getting too much to the point I don't even want my grandkids to come and see me. So the best thing I could say is, if we can get the, the security like we should have, and we don't even have exits no more, we have one exit to get out the building instead of two. And that was a concern for me, too, because if we have a fire or somebody's shooting, if I'm coming out the elevator to go out, if somebody's shooting, where am I, where am I run? I don't have nowhere to run. So that's my main concern with the safety in this here. And that's a problem for me. And I've been there 12 years. It never was like that when I first moved there. I thought it was going to be nice, but with the rodents, the roaches, I'd barely be home. Why I got roaches if I'm not cooking? I don't understand, so. But I just wanted to bring this to you guys' attention, and I hope we can get the help that we need. And I want to thank you guys for allowing me to speak.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can a clerk call next speaker?
Doralyn Green.
Hello, everyone. My name is Doralyn Green. I'm also a resident of Ida Yarborough. I've been there about 12 years or so. It wasn't like it is now. When I moved there, it was nice. There was security. There was people that used to come and ask, "Do you live here?" And probably didn't believe me because I was white, but I live there. So, and I love the residents. And today I want to address a fundamental need that impacts not just our physical comfort, but our mental well-being, the right to live in a clean, safe, and secure surroundings. Our environment isn't just where we reside. It's integral to how we feel, think, and thrive. When the spaces we call home are neglected, overrun with invading pests or rodents, and have compromised, compromised security, it doesn't just affect our health. It undermines our sense of dignity and our peace of mind. This issue feels even more pressing when I compare it to another building that is considered public housing that I regularly visit called the South Mall Towers. There, the environment is entirely different. That building has a full staff working around the clock to ensure security and cleanliness. All entry and exit doors are accessible every day without fail. Residents there experience not just convenience, but a sense of safety and care that should be standard for everyone. So I ask, why is there such a stark contrast between that building and mine? Shouldn't these standards be consistent across all housing of this kind? Is, is public housing expected to be synonymous with crime, insecurity, and unhealthy conditions? Why are we left to contend with rodents, bugs, unreliable securities while others enjoy environments that would, that reflect respect for their dignity and well-being? Cleanliness and security are not luxuries. They're essential rights. They contribute profoundly to mental well-being, creating spaces where people can feel safe, dignified, and valued. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Can a clerk call the next speaker?
Sam Fine.
Hello, council. My name is Sam Fine. I live at 80 Grand Street. I think everyone in this room knows me. I'm an Albany County legislator. And I'm here today with the tenants of Ida Yarborough. And I represent the Ida Yarborough Housing, my legislative district, and I'm joining them today because I've been working with the Ida Yarborough tenants for the past few months, along with the United Tenants of Albany, to, to form a tenants' union. And they brought up to me the conditions that I won't go into detail about because I think you've heard, heard about them all tonight directly from the residents. They brought that up to me a few months ago and, you know, worked with them to try to organize, to bring those concerns directly to the housing authorities so that they could get them addressed. And they met, as they mentioned today, with the Albany Housing Authority, and I'm hopeful because it looks like the housing authority is willing to work with them. They agreed to meet a lot of their demands within 30 days, although I think we still have to stay diligent. We need to make sure that we, you know, hold them accountable to following through. But as you heard, the, the one major issue that they were not willing to address was the security issue. And this is a major issue. Everyone deserves to feel safe in the home that they live in. And this is housing provided by, the public provided by government, and we have a responsibility to ensure that we're providing everyone with safe, healthy, quality housing. And, you know, I'm just here to urge the common council to do whatever you can to, to get a, an officer from the Albany Police Department in the building to ensure that people are safe or to, or to get the housing authority to provide security. Because I think more than just an officer is needed, clearly, you know, cameras and other security measures are needed. And, you know, I often find in government, being in county government, oftentimes there's a blame game between different levels of government. And I know the housing authority is saying it's the responsibility of the tenants or the responsibility of the city. But I think ultimately, we have to get to the, to the bottom of it. And it doesn't really matter who provides it, but the residents need an answer now. They need action now. And so, thank you, everyone here, for, for listening and just, you know, urge everyone to take this seriously and to do whatever you can to address this situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Can a clerk call next speaker?
Patricia Pierce.
Good evening. I'm Patricia Pierce. I live on Grove Avenue in Albany. You've all heard that water fluoridation is safe and effective. This is simply not the case. I'm going to concentrate on effectiveness tonight. You received an email from Safe Water Albany a few weeks ago with several graphs as attachments. I'd like to review some of them here, showing that fluoridation now has little, if any, effectiveness. This graph right here, compiled from the, from data from the World Health Organization, compares cavity rates in fluoridated and unfluoridated industrial nations. As you can see, by 2005, there is no difference whatsoever. And I'm going to pass this around, actually. Would you mind? The second one, the second graph, I was unable to print, but we did send it to you. And this is data that's compiled from the 2024 Cochrane Collaboration, which is considered the gold standard of measuring effectiveness of health interventions. This shows the effectiveness of fluoride, of, I'm sorry, this shows the effectiveness of fluoride in reducing cavities, which some studies showed over 50 years ago is now near zero. Cochrane measured the 21 highest quality studies and determined the rate is a statistically insignificant 3% to 4% difference, with the distinct possibility of, quote, "no benefit" whatsoever. This graph right here is compiled from data from the New York State Health Department, which we also sent to you. As you can see, the percent of third graders with a cavity is virtually the same, no matter how much of the county is fluoridated. Not only that, but Albany County, one of the least fluoridated, has one of the lowest cavity rates in the state. I'll also pass this, this one around. Finally, you've heard about Utah where Governor Spencer Cox just signed the bill banning fluoridation. This is a quote from the March 28th New York Times. Nearly half of the state has been drinking fluoridated water while the other half has not. Between those two groups, Cox said, quote, "You'd think you would see drastically different outcomes. We haven't." New York State's data showing no effectiveness matches up with Utah's, which matches up with the nations all over the world and matches up with the Cochrane Collaboration's 2024 report. The evidence is consistent and overwhelming that fluoridation now has little or no effectiveness. And yet, we keep hearing that fluoridation cuts cavity rates in children by at least 25%. Where did this figure come from? It came from the CDC, and it's repeated everywhere by the American Dental Association, the American Academy of Pediatrics, and virtually all of mainstream media. But where did the CDC get that 25% figure? If you look on their website, it came from only one source, the Cochrane Collaboration. At first, you might think, that's great. As I said, Cochrane is considered the gold standard in the world in measuring effectiveness. But then you look closer. This 25% figure is taken from Cochrane's 2015 report, which reviewed mostly outdated, low-quality studies with higher fluoride levels than today's 0.7 milligrams per liter. CDC has ignored Cochrane's 2024 report. This is cherry picking at its worst. Our trust has been betrayed, and all of this is a matter of public record. Safe Water Albany calls on the Albany Common Council to withdraw the legislation to fluoridate the city. Thank you.
Thank you. That is, that is the final speaker for tonight's public comment period, so public comment period is deemed closed. We'll move on to approval of minutes from previous meeting. Mr. Kimbrough.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer the March 17th, 2025 meeting minutes for approval.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Meeting approval minutes passes. Continuing on considerations of local laws. Moving on to local laws held. Ms. Keegan.
I move to amend local law J of 2024 as it's noticed in the legislation.
Thank you. Is there any objections to these, this amendment? Is there any? Amendment, it's passed. Next, Mr. Anani.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to amend local law L of 2024 to add sunset provision to 2028.
Thank you. Is there any objections to these amendments? No objections? Okay, continuing on. We'll now move into reports of standing committees. Reports, Ms. Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Law Buildings and Code Enforcement Committee met on Thursday, March 20th. We discussed ordinance 217124. Oh, we did not discuss ordinance 217124. We were holding and, for a future one. We discussed ordinance 248124 and passed it through the committee with some amendments with positive recommendation. We also discussed local law L and discussed several amendments, which council member Anani just noted. And we moved that through the committee with a positive recommendation as well.
Thank you. Any other reports standing committees? Any other reports standing committees? I think so. Moving on to considerations of ordinance introduced. We'll start with Mr. Ballerin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask that Ordinance 24125 be read.
Thank you. Can a clerk please read the ordinance?
An ordinance amending Part 38 Public Education and Government Access Oversight Board, PEG, of Chapter 42 Departments and Commission of the Code of the City of Albany in relation to the composition of the Public Education and Government Access Oversight Board.
Ms. Kimbrough.
Thank you, Mr. President's referral to the council's PEG ad hoc committee.
Thank you. Continuing on, Mr. Conti.
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice the introduction of Ordinance 3.41.25.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the ordinance?
An ordinance amending Part 3 Cabaret's of Chapter 111 Amusement of the Code of the City of Albany in relation to updating the city's entertainment licensing provisions.
Mr. Kimbrough.
Thank you, Mr. President's referral to the council's planning committee.
Thank you. Continuing on, we have a majority consent. Mr. Kimbrough.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to add Ordinance 44125 by majority consent.
Is there a second on that motion? Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Ms. Frederick.
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice Ordinance 44125 via majority consent for introduction.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the ordinance?
An ordinance authorizing and directing the grant of an easement over a portion of city-owned property at 5 Mill Road Tax Map Parcel Number 75.00-2-8 to the Eastern Gas Transmission and Storage Incorporated for the replacement of an existing pipeline at the property.
Thank you. Mr. Kimbrough.
Thank you. It'll be referral to the council's finance committee.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to ordinances held. Ms. Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice Ordinance 248124 and ask for its passage.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the ordinance?
An ordinance amending Chapter 359 Vehicles and Traffic and Chapter 251 Parks and Recreation of the Code of the City of Albany in relation to the operation of active transportation in the city of Albany.
Is there any discussion on this ordinance? Ms. Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to thank my colleagues, particularly Councilmember Zamer, who co-sponsored this with me. When we were, we've talked about our bike code for quite some time. And it's likely was put together before even cars existed, when bicycles were new in the late 1800s. It includes farm animals in it, what to do if you come up to a horse in an intersection, which actually, we should all be, every time we come near a horse on our bicycle, we should be ringing the bike bell twice, just so we all know. It also has velocipeds in there, which, if you don't know what that is, it's one of the old-timey bikes with a giant wheel and a little tiny wheel. So our current bike code covers velocipeds, but does not cover skateboard, scooters, or things that people actually can ride safely. So we knew that we had to basically revamp the entire thing. So instead of a bicycle-specific code, it's now called an active transportation code. And it talks about where you, we're going to need help from partners to really get the word out on exactly where it's okay to use your wheeled vehicles, person-propelled wheeled vehicles. If it has a motor, it's always in the street. But it's an important thing. We say if you are on the sidewalk and you're a pedestrian or somebody using a disability instrument or stroller, you have the right of way. We encourage people who are using active transportation to use the roadway. There are situations on some roads where you might not feel safe using your bicycle or if you have a small child, something like that, you might feel safer on the sidewalk. In those situations, you defer to the pedestrian, and there are some rules within that. I want to give huge thanks to Ed Brennan of the Albany Bicycle Coalition and Ann Savage of the New York Bicycling Coalition for their help. They were absolutely instrumental in working through this. And again, thanks to our staff and to everybody for putting it together. It's not the easiest thing to work through a big chunk of city code, particularly when it comes from the late 1800s. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Farrell. Before we vote on this, it says a pending amendment, I guess we have to have on the floor, that it was amended. You stated it in your report, but we have to ask for the amendment on the floor.
Yes, that was the question I wasn't sure about. So, do I move to amend it?
Yep, that's it.
So, I move to amend Ordinance 248124.
Yep, that's it. Is there any objections to the amendments? No objections? Amendment passes. And now, we moved. Any further discussion on this ordinance? Because she already called for the vote. Is there any none? Can a clerk please call the roll?
Adams.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Anani. Ballerin.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Clark.
Yes.
Conti.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Farrell.
Yes.
Flynn.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Frederick.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Howie.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Johnson.
Yes.
Keegan.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Kimbrough.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Love.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Robinson.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Zamer.
Yes.
Fifteen and affirmative.
Ordinance passes. Mr. Kimbrough, that's all the ordinance. Mr. Kimbrough.
Thank you, Mr. President. The rest of the ordinance is on the agenda or held.
Thank you. Moving on to considerations of resolutions. Mr. Ballerin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask the Resolution 204125 R be read and move forward for a vote.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
A resolution of the Common Council endorsing the expansion of access to rent stabilization through the Rent Emergency Stabilization for Tenants Rest Act, Senate Bill 4659-A, Assembly Bill 4877-A.
Discussion on this resolution. Mr. Ballerin.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I want to thank the co-sponsors on this resolution. I want to thank everyone that's worked on this issue for quite some time. And I also want to thank this body, who's been working on this issue since 2019. So just to remind this body, this original resolution was presented by then-Councilwoman Judy Dochee, that was voted on by the body at the time and funding was put in the budget in 2019 with a 2020 budget for us to do the survey. Now, we all know what happened in 2020. 2020 was a year that no one will forget. But with all that was going on that year, the survey was something that was not able to be moved forward. Since that year, in 2021 and 2022, we also put items in our budget that stated we support it moving forward with a survey. In 2023, we moved forward with not just putting the funding in the budget, but also having very clear expectations of how that funding was to be handled. In 2024, we did the survey, and we got a result of 8.3%. And we discussed where the survey should be done, where the survey was valid. We discussed a lot of things. But what we have not discussed is whether we should have stabilization in our city or not. We have discussed for the last six years where we should do a survey on that or where the survey, you know, and the results of the survey. So for the last six years, this body has discussed the survey. For the last six years, this body has put a lot of work on this, a lot of resources, on getting to the point to be able to discuss where we should have it or not. The bill before the state is a bill that would eliminate the survey. Now, I truly believe the survey is flawed, and I'll tell you why. I've mentioned it before to some of my colleagues, I'll mention it again. Tax day is next week, right? The 15th? Imagine the government didn't take one penny from you. Nothing for Social Security, nothing for federal or state taxes, not one penny from you for the entire year. But you had to pay your first share come the 15th. However, if the only penalty for not paying your first share was $25, that's it. Not that you had to pay your back, no. The only penalty for not paying your first share was $25, how many people would pay their first share? The only penalty for not being honest on these surveys is $500. That is the equivalent of $25 for many of these individuals. So the system has been structured in a way that it's very difficult to get accurate information. Not only that, if you get a city that actually has a survey that's below 5%, it gets brought into legal battles that cost municipalities a lot of money and have created more confusion. So I would rather have an opportunity to have an honest conversation on things we may disagree on. We may disagree if we should have this at all. We never even had to have that, we never even got an opportunity to have that discussion because we've been talking about the survey for the last six years. I'd rather have a disagreement on unit size. This bill gives more flexibility on unit size. Maybe some believe it should be two. Maybe some believe it should be six. Maybe some believe it should be 20. But let's have those discussions. Those discussions are actual discussions that are about the subject we've been trying to talk about for the last six years. So I appreciate, you know, different viewpoints on this, and I appreciate all my colleagues', you know, different perspective. I want to be 100% upfront. When I put this forward in February, I put it in the same similar structure that we've done in the past for these resolutions. So that's why it's written, the way it's written. And again, I respect my colleagues', you know, positions on this. But I personally believe, I'd like to send the message to the state. Allow us to have the discussion about the issue versus having a barrier that doesn't even allow us to get there. Or, to be honest with you, then stop saying you can do it anywhere else. Let's be honest. Because you give people a lot of false hope, letting people think this is something that they may have actual opportunities to gas, have some protection. If it's never actually structured in a way to actually be able to give people those protections. So I appreciate all my colleagues' work on, support on this and on this issue in the past. And I ask my colleagues to allow us to send a message to the city, to the state. Give us an opportunity to actually discuss the issue. And that, tell us we can find new ways, create more barriers that don't allow us to actually get into the issue itself. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know that during budget season, there was a certain level of frustration with housing advocates and myself. And it centered around ETPA funding and the fact that I did not support the city attempting to do another vacancy study. And I am supporting this legislation now because I truly felt that the flaw was not in the vacancy study that the city conducted. The flaw was in the actual construction of the Emergency Tenant Protection Act. We have seen municipalities across the state abjectly fail to be able to get over the threshold and withstand a multitude of lawsuits aimed at clearing a housing crisis in their municipalities. And yet, we know that we have a significant housing crisis across the country. So I, and I understand my colleagues' concerns, that this is a bill that's in committee. We don't know what the final language of the bill draft is going to be. But I do think that we, as a city, need to communicate with the legislature that this is something that we want the legislature to take on and to tackle and to take seriously and to do sooner rather than later. So for all of those reasons, I am proud to stand with my colleague in support of this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. The city of Albany needs a housing plan. For four years on being on this council, this council or this administration has not put out a single housing plan to address the needs of our city. The fact that we're in committee and having meetings or pushing discussions off just goes to show why things aren't working how they need to be. In order to do something, you need a plan. A plan has to be in order. Conversations have to be had even before the topic is brought up to be able to plan for something. It doesn't take years for something to happen in the state for us to have discussions about this on a local level. I've only been on the council for four years and can tell you, these conversations could have been had if you had worked together to establish a housing plan that incorporated local government, county government, and our state local officials. None of that has happened. We all know that. We have not been in any meetings that have allowed us to work with the county, have allowed us to work with state-elected officials. I myself have brought state-elected officials to the conversation, to you guys, to be able to address the housing concerns that we've had in our city for the last few years. This legislation tonight that we're discussing sounds good, sounds great. It is needed. But without a housing plan in place, you're just throwing stuff to the wall and hoping it sticks. And within this legislation, it has adverse consequences that are going to happen, that has been proven in most cities and places. If we're going to go down this rabbit hole, I just suggest that everyone do their research, deep research, communicate with your elected officials on a state level if you feel like that's going to be helpful. But the push should be on the state lawmakers to address the gaps and loopholes that do exist on the state level. This is just another loophole to address the problem or get around the problem without having to address the root cause of the problem, which is affordability. So if people in the state or in the city of Albany still have a problem with affordability and finding access to good-paying jobs that will allow them to find better housing, that is still going to be an issue even with rent stabilization in place. We have to address the root causes and stop trying to put Band-Aids over it and sell it as a win. Let's get a housing plan in place. Let's start conversations that address the real issues that people are coming in here, discussing with us, and put a plan together. That way, moving forward, we're not just throwing inclusionary zoning and we're not just stopping development. We're not just putting rent stabilization in. We're not killing mom-and-pop landlords. There has to be a plan. There has to be a cohesive plan that makes sense legislatively, practically, and realistic. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Mr. Conti.
I find myself agreeing with Mr. Adams. Not always. No, but I do agree that there is a need for a comprehensive housing plan, housing affordability issues. We've talked about a lot of different elements, and the council has adopted very different elements. But my concern always has been, how do we bring these together in terms of cohesion as far as a comprehensive plan? That sometimes you do things that have, might have an opposite effect. But, so I think you really do need to do that. But on this particular resolution, as I, you know, expressed concern earlier during caucus, I do believe that these policy resolutions, which endorse specific state legislation, and I do think it's a better way of expressing our concerns with state provisions rather than these resolutions, which lock into a particular piece of legislation, which can actually address the issues that are of concern based on our experience. But these resolutions, which endorse specific legislation, are policy legislations, and they really should be going through the appropriate policy committee so that we can have that policy discussion in terms of how it works. I still have questions as to how this particular piece of legislation works. Having read it... Having read it, having read the existing law and, and how it all fits in, um, I, I still have questions about if this does what we want it to do or what I believe the majority wants to do or not. So, for those reasons, because I do think this is a policy discussion, that really the forum should be a policy committee rather than a caucus or, which is what we've done tonight, uh, I will be voting present without prejudice on this particular piece of legislation because I think there, there is a, a more appropriate forum for that discussion.
Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, as I speak as a renter, um, people who are in this struggle, they are looking for us to do something. And, you know, a lot of times in, in this last seven years, um, we, we took a gigantic leap and we passed Good Cause Eviction, which provided temporary, uh, assurances to renters. But, um, it's, it's a, um, it, it, it's a vicious thirty-day, um, struggle right now for people who have to pay rent because at a, a moment's notice, there could be changes. When you hearing that the senior citizens' rent is going up three and four times in one calendar year, that's problematic. And if we have this information about directions that we should be going in, we should be having these conversations so that we can move it. This council has shown that we are concerned about, um, how, um, people feel, and I think that it's only right if we have people that have that, um, knowledge of what's going on and, and to, that can lead us in the right direction to, um, speak up on it because, like I said, you know, um, some nights I struggle to get to sleep dealing with, um, the things that I have to deal with as a renter. So, uh, when, when, when we see people trying to address, um, the, the rent situation around here, it's, it's real, it's serious, and, um, it, it, it's interfering with, uh, people's livelihoods. It's hard to, um, find the comfort that you need, um, in, in dealing with some of these landlords that people have to deal with. So, uh, I, we're, we're at a damn if you do, damn if you don't. If we don't do anything, um, people are feeling like we're, we're not hearing them. And when we try to do, um, things, you know, all of these different, uh, factors come into play. So, um, as again, as I said earlier, I think that what we're going to see going forward on the state level with, um, Assemblywoman Romero, who was in here championing a lot of this stuff that we're, um, speaking about, she's going to be the voice that we haven't had in the past on these, um, particular, uh, subjects. So, I, 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 I think that, um, in the past, we did this, we supported things when we knew it was coming up. Uh, and, and I think that, uh, doing it this way today, uh, is going to give Councilwoman Romero the, uh, push that, um, she may need to, uh, win some people over on the state level. So, thank you.
Did you have your hand up, Mr. Baller? Did you have? Oh, was it Woo's? Oh, okay. Mr. Baller's going to speak, he's a sponsor, so after he speaks, there'll be no more discussion on this resolution. So, go ahead, Mr. Baller.
Thank you. Uh, again, I want to thank all my colleagues for all their work and all of their support on many of the different housing legislations that we've passed throughout, uh, throughout the last seven years. Um, you know, because it's, this isn't something that is new. We've, we've, we've been proactive on many of these housing issues. And, you know, we, we were the first city to pass Good Cause in twenty-twenty-one and the first city to pass it again in twenty-twenty-four. We were a city that passed a, a stronger inclusionary housing, uh, uh, policy. So, you know, it is all linked together. It, it's not, you know, I think I've, I've mentioned, you know, it's, it's none of these policies are the co- golden ticket. There is no golden ticket to this issue. Okay? It's different tools that we put into our toolbox. Inclusionary housing helps so that, that when we have new development, there is some small percentage of affordability in those new developments. Good Cause Eviction helped so that when you have someone who's already in an existing home, their rent has to go up at a reasonable amount, not just forty, fifty, sixty percent increases. Rent stabilization will allow for those specific buildings that are classified to then have those empty units. Those empty units that Good Cause does not protect. Those empty units to have a certain increase that they would be allowed to go up to. So, I just want to be clear, a lot of work has gone on housing. None of them are the golden ticket, but all of them combined will hopefully put us in a better place. I'm a strong supporter that I think the state needs to be looking at a new voucher program to help people who are struggling to make ends meet, be able to have the extra support, the extra financial support to make the rent. But I, I want to just be clear. The median income in the city of Albany is fifty-two thousand. That means half of the people, half of our residents are spending almost half of their income on rent. Roughly. That's the real numbers. Those are the real numbers. So, um, I appreciate all the work and support that has gone on this issue throughout the last seven years. I don't think this body has, I, I, I think this body has been doing the difficult work and having the tough conversations. I mean, we've had some tough conversations over these years on the, on these issues. So, I just want to make sure people who are watching, people who, who may not be as aware of what this body has done, I want them to know this body has been working on this issue for a long time and we've had some tough conversations, we've had some tough meetings, uh, and, and, and we've come with some good compromises to move some of these policies forward. So, um, and I, and all, all this bill will do, if it gets passed through the state, would allow us to have those tough talks again on this specific subject versus the talk being about whether we should, were the consequences of having, um, a survey. So, I hope my colleagues can continue to push forward so we can have these tough conversations in the future.
Thank you. Can the clerk call the roll?
Adams.
President.
Anani.
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Ballerin.
Yes.
Clark.
President.
Conti.
President.
Farrell.
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Flynn.
President.
Frederick.
Yes.
Hoey.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Keegan.
Yes.
Kimbrough.
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Love.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Zamer.
Yes.
Eleven in the affirmative? Four present.
Resolution passes. Continue on with resolutions introduced. Ms. Love.
Thank you, Mr. President. I noticed, uh, Resolun- Resolution twenty-two point forty-one point twenty-five R and asked for its passage.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
A resolution of the common council declaring April twenty-twenty-five to be Minority Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Albany.
Discussion on this resolution. Ms. Love.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I would like to thank Dr. Brenda Robertson for coming down tonight to give us an update on the minority problems in the, in the, in the neighborhood. But I just got a quick story to tell. In two thousand sixteen, I lost my second oldest sister to, uh, bone, uh, bone marrow cancer and, uh, my lung, and then in, two years ago in twenty-three, I, I lost my fourth sister to cancer of the pancreas. And the truth be told, they, they never went to the doctors. Until it was too late. They self-medicated, they thought they could take this, they went to the holistic store, they go to the co-op and they buy stuff. And by the time they got to a real doctor, they was both in stage four at several different times. It's real. This is real. We, we just don't, we just think healthcare is just a joke. And I'm telling you, you should back him in what's going on with you, especially with cancer. Like Dr. Brenda Robertson said, a lot of this can be cured and we don't take a chance to go to the doctors if you go to the ER. Just go to the ER. Just, just, I end this. Thank you, I just asked for its passage.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I'm gonna just go ahead and say, um, I just, um, got over dealing with, um, cancer and, you know, um, until it hits home, you don't realize the magnitude of what you're dealing with. Um, I, as I stand or sit here today, I can say that I'm cancer-free, um, and, you know, I'm blessed to be able to say that. But, you know, when, um, Dr. Robertson was speaking, I just was thinking about, you know, um, how many people in our community are walking around and not knowing, um, what, what is, uh, living inside them. So, uh, I, I will be more active in this conversation and, um, just wanted to say thank you, um, for, uh, bringing it up because, um, some people, when they find out, it's too late and I'm glad that I wasn't one of those people. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Flynn?
Yeah, on a personal note, I had my first colonoscopy, uh, about two months ago. The doctor did say if I didn't have, if I waited another year or two, life could be different. So, I'm glad this is on about awareness of going to the doctor on time.
Thank you. And since everyone is co-sponsor on this, this is a voice vote. All those in favor? Aye. Resolution passes. Continue. Oh, you were doing a pro- I didn't know that. Um, she wants to present, um, Doc Robertson with the proclamation? Smart. Moving on to our next resolution, Councilmember Clark.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to notice Resolution twenty-three dot forty-one dot twenty-five R and ask for its passage.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
A resolution of the common council supporting the passage of the New York State Legislature's Healthy Homes Right to Know Act, which requires the display of certain labels and warnings on gas stoves.
Thank you. Discussion on this resolution. Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I would like to thank the advocates that came down, uh, this evening and spoke. I'm not going to, uh, repeat all the points that they made. I think, um, you know, they, they made a lot of strong arguments as to why this legislation should pass. So, I'd like to thank this council for supporting this resolution, uh, last year as well as the support of council president in, um, bringing this to our attention. And I think, as noted, just the ability to identify, uh, the potential, uh, issues that can come, uh, pollutants that are released from gas stoves, uh, just giving consumers that opportunity is so important to understand that. So, uh, I ask that the rest of the council support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Mr. Conti.
I ju- I, I'm, I, I actually don't, I don't have a problem with, with what the resolution seeks to do in the state legislation, but to be consistent with my previous, uh, position in terms of, uh, policy-related bills going through a policy committee for discussion, um, I will, I will vote pres- present without prejudice.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Real quick, um, first of all, I'd like to, you know, I'm pretty sure we noticed it. Uh, one of the speakers said it. Dr. Robertson's speech, Dr. Robertson's public comment peer, comic talks, and this resolution is about awareness. So, getting the word out so people are aware what's happening to their bodies, getting the word out so people are aware what, in their homes, what could be harmful, and then they can make those decisions. And I think that it's so important, especially in our most underserved, uh, communities, our most poorest communities. Uh, it's not all about, sometimes not about just race, it's about poverty. Uh, people who are poor, they're, they're less likely to get the right information consistently, not just once a month, but consistently, so they begin to change their habits. So, I think these, these two resolutions has shown this council is really looking at, um, making sure that we do all, everything in our power to make sure people have the correct information, they get informed to make their own decisions. Uh, and also, I want to say this about the, Mr. Conti's remarks about looking at resolutions such as this when it comes to legislation. I do agree with him that sometimes it's not that we, we have to support the legislation, but a resolution like this could be the intent of what the council wants to see without mentioning the law that is, uh, in front of the state legislature. So, I think that's the one way that the council can be looking at those things as well. Maybe not looking at the law, but looking at the intent of the law and, and then having that discussion. But with that being said, can the clerk please call the roll?
Adams.
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Anani.
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Ballerin.
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Clark.
Yes.
Conti.
Without prejudice, uh, present.
Farrell.
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Flynn.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Frederick.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Hoey.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Johnson.
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Keegan.
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Kimbrough.
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Love.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Zamer.
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Thirteen in the affirmative.
Resolution passes. Continuing on, Mr. Ballerin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask that, uh, Resolution twenty-four forty-one twenty-five R, uh, be read and moved forward for a vote.
Can the clerk please read the resolution?
A resolution of the common council recognizing and celebrating April twenty-twenty-five as Arab-American Heritage Month in the city of Albany.
Uh, discussion on this resolution. Mr. Ballerin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I want to thank all the co-sponsors and, and all the, the members that, uh, supported this. Uh, you know, the, this is a month where we recognize the contributions of our residents of, from the Arab descent, uh, what they've given to our city, what they've given to our country, uh, and, uh, their culture, their spirit, their service. Um, and we recognize them and thank them for, for being our, our neighbors. So, thank you for your support.
Further discussion? Seeing none, since you're-
I just want to make sure I'm listed as a co-sponsor since my name, I seem to be the only one that's not listed as a co-sponsor.
I know. Yep. But we do have everyone as a co-sponsor. So, since everyone's a co-sponsor, this will be another voice vote. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you. Resolution passes. Um, before we move on to our next resolution, um, we do, uh, Mr. Genny, before you, Mr. Genny, before you leave, we do like, I didn't know we had a proclamation. Uh, so the council does like to take a picture with the whole group when we have a proclamation. So, can we assume your position? For our proclamation? Thank you. Continuing on with resolutions. Moving on. Ms. Keegan?
Yes, I notice Resolution twenty-five forty-one twenty-five R and ask for its passage.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
A resolution of the Common Council commemorating April of twenty-twenty-five as Autism Awareness Month.
Discussion on this resolution. Ms. Keegan?
You know, usually we want to be very positive when we're, we're doing awareness months about all the wonderful contributions that community members have made to our society. But we are in a time, in a D E I witch hunt, which is negatively impacting things like minority cancer and disparities in health outcomes, but it is also significantly impacting our disability community. And I just wanted to take a moment to remind everybody about how much we have achieved since the I D E A was passed, particularly for folks with autism and their ability to be included in school and to be successful in school and to go on and become successful adults in our society. And we are at risk of all of those things being ripped away at a time when wages have not kept up with our cost of living, particularly for the individuals and direct care staff who provide such significant supports to these populations. And so, I just wanted to touch base on that and to note that tonight, that while we need to be proud of all of, that we have had accomplished since we started building true inclusive, inclusivity in our society, we are at risk of losing that and we have so much work left to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Keegan. Any further discussion? Seeing none, since you're all co-sponsors, there'll be a voice vote. All those in favor? Aye. Resolution passes. Thank you. Continuing on, Mr. Kimbrough?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice Resolution twenty-six forty-one twenty-five and ask for its passage.
Can the clerk please read it?
A resolution of the Common Council remembering and honoring William Henry Johnson's legacy.
Discussion on this. Mr. Kimbrough?
Yes, sir. Yes. Given everything that's going on with our, with our federal government, I mean, legislation or resolutions like this are fairly important nowadays and you see them happening all around the country. As a proud sponsor, I offer this resolution to reaffirm our commitment to preserving full, unvarnished truth of American history. Sergeant Henry Johnson was a hero from Albany who faced not only enemy fire in World War I, but the sting of discrimination upon his return. We honor his legacy by ensuring his history is not erased and that his valor continues to inspire generations of Albany residents and Americans alike. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, everyone's a co-sponsor, so this will be a voice vote. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you. Resolution passes. Mr. Kimbrough?
Yes, sir. Mr. President, thank you. I notice Resolution twenty-seven forty-one twenty-five and ask for its passage.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
A resolution of the Common Council acknowledging the week of April sixth through April twelfth as National Crime Victims Rights Week.
Discussion on this resolution. Mr. Kimbrough?
Yes, yes. So, I'm honored to sponsor this resolution, recognizing, recognizing National Crime Victims Rights Week. As someone who served both as a police officer and a public servant, I know firsthand how trauma reverberates through communities. This week is about standing in solidarity with survivors, lifting up organizations, doing the hard work of healing, and affirming our commitment to justice, compassion, and kinship. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other further discussion? Seeing none, you're all co-sponsors, so this is another voice vote. All those in favor? Aye. Resolution passes. Mr. Kimbrough?
Thank you, Mr. President. Rest of the resolution's on the agenda, help.
Thank you. And Ms. Farrell, Commissioner of Deeds?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice the following names be appointed as Commissioner of Deeds until December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five, and I waive the reading of the names therein.
Thank you. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. Any miscellaneous unfinished business? We'll start Mr. Flynn and then Mr. Kelly.
I'd be missed if we didn't mention the passing of Chief Hornabriel's death today, so in a moment of silence, I just want to make that aware. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn. Mr. Kimbrough?
Yeah, just on the Ida Yarborough issue there, I've met with both the tenants, the Housing Authority, I'm on the board, obviously, and I met with Chief Cox all in the last week, week and a half to try to deal with these issues. Again, the safety is a police issue. It, it, it is. I mean, and, and another thing is that the hiring, the Housing Authority has a detail that they try to hire police officers with, but because APD is so short, they're, they're having trouble getting bodies to fill that detail. So, we've talked about it in the board meetings, maybe the possibility of going outside of housing with some, with, with a private vendor or, or something of the like. But again, public safety, again, public safety, the, the police and, and, and walking and doing the petition thing, it's an issue not unique to Ida. Went through Green Street, they're dealing with the same issues, but all two-hundred, two-twenty, two-thirty, all the, the people lounging and loitering and it, it's, it's an ongoing problem. And we're, we're, we're gonna try to, to fix it and get the folks some relief. As far as the, the conditions, I mean, that, it's, it's unacceptable. There was a meeting to, earlier today where the group listed some demands for, for housing and the housing is working to try to take care of some of those issues. But the, the safety issue's gonna be a, a greater issue and again, I'm working with Chief Cox to try to come up with a fix for that. So.
Mr. Johnson?
That's all I got.
Thank you. And thank you for that update because one of the things that, while I was gone, I was thinking about the quality of life. And if you go to each ward, the quality either gets lower and lower. And, you know, in the seat that I sit on, I talk to the other side of the room because the other side of the room are the upper wards. And I have said, you know, historically, that when people start championing the ills that are going on in the lower wards, I think that we will get the attention that we're looking for. Historically, Albany Housing Authority had their own security. They had a dispatch, they had everything. Each, each apartment complex had a, a number of people that came from that community. One of the guys sitting over there that came up to speak, I remember him being one of those security guards. And it was, it was powerful because it, it employed a lot of people that came from Albany Housing. And I, and I just think that, and we can't forget about the scandal years ago with APD where people were filling out overtime and, and not doing the work. And so, that isn't a, a reason why we shouldn't have what we need. And it's just heartfelt when you see pictures, you know. Anybody that's lived in housing understands how important it is for the overhead to first have open ears and, and have a mind to find solutions. Because if you don't address those issues, they get bigger. And so, that's not only, any building in Albany that has multi floors and doors that don't have a, a person watching them, people are coming inside, they're searching for heat, they're searching for livable spaces. So, I think we have to make noise about the quality of life. There shouldn't be inconsistencies from ward to ward, from parts of town. There should be. When you come, when you come downtown, you come, you go past the MPV arena and you go under that bridge, you know, anybody that's familiar with the Second Ward, you could see things that are just obvious, that people are in trauma all day long, right out in front of people. And another thing that I wanted to talk about is those bus stops. You know, people had a lot of concerns about those bus stops when they were being introduced and they have just become like a, a stage play for the ills of Albany, you know. People shouldn't have to ride by and they see a, a gentleman or a woman with their pants down and their rear end exposed and then, you know, shooting some type of substance in their body. I think that that's a lot for me as an adult to see. But I just imagine, once again, what's going on in, in our kids' minds when they see that type of stuff. So, I think that we need to make a strong push for the quality of life issues that people are continuously concerned with, that it seems to be a finger pointing, oh, we don't deal with this and, and they don't deal. And I'm not understanding why APD can't address things, but the sheriff's offices, officers are coming in and addressing it immediately. So, some consistency would be nice and also, once again, the quality of life. Thank you.
Mr. Howie?
Yeah, thank you. I just want to give everybody an update. At the caucus, I mentioned that we were going through the selection process for a new program director for the CPRB. That person was, we did find somebody. They were given a job offer, they accepted, and we're hoping they'll start. There is going to be an investigation just to make sure that they have a, you know, clean record. But we hope to have them in place next month. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Adams?
Thank you, Mr. President. Two things to touch on before we end. One of the things this evening was, again, our advocates who came out to speak, our Safe Water Albany advocates who has come to the council on many occasions, providing information, education, facts, data to this council and have asked and requested you all to read and to take in this information. Tonight, Mr. President, you mentioned something that was very important that plays into this said situation. You said, this month and what we passed this evening about bringing awareness and allowing people to make their own decisions. What we're doing with this fluoridation is the complete opposite of that. I want everyone in here that, who still supports this to accept that and know that because that's how it's being perceived. You're taking away people's rights to something. You're doing something that people do not want, nor did they consent to. But you all are sitting here making the decisions based off of your personal experiences, personal feelings. Because when it comes to the facts and information that's been provided, you've been provided with updated information, facts, to be able to take this into account. The people of Safe Water Albany and people who are opposed to fluoridation or just want to see the council slow down this process, I don't believe they're asking for anything too much. They're asking for you to please put a moratorium in place. Please take a second to look through the information and data that's been provided, what other states have just passed, and please educate the public about this fluoridation. We have still yet to see any education about fluoridation in the city of Albany. Yet, here in April, the Water Department is putting out a bid. Why are we putting out a bid before we can educate the public as to what we just signed them up for? That's totally wrong, in my opinion. I think we should literally take a pause and a big step from this topic and put this moratorium in effect to at least do our due diligence of informing the public about this. At the very least, if you're going to move forward with this, put some type of campaign together, the city, and educate the people as to how fluoridation will affect them, how it will affect pregnant women, how it affects young children, how it affects people with disabilities. So, again, we're asking for something that seems fair. If you all still hold on or cling to your positions respectfully, that's your position. But people in Albany, once they find this out, they're not going to be thrilled about this, let alone the fact that they're being robbed from having to make that decision for themselves. Secondly, housing plan, housing plan, housing plan. Again, to my earlier point and what's happening here now at Ida Yarborough, if there was a housing plan in place, if there was coordination in the city of Albany with these different departments and APD to address these issues, things wouldn't get this far where we have to have people put pictures to just show you all what's happening in these buildings. I lived in Albany Housing for seven years. I've also worked in homeless services and housing for eight years here in Albany, housing homeless families. Majority of the people here in Albany that are homeless, I know because I've worked with them. So, the issues that are happening in the realm of just the housing, whether you're looking at public housing, whether you're looking at just the conditions of what we were talking about earlier of rent stabilization, all these different things should be discussed and put into a plan. There's no reason why a plan should not be in place or a plan should not be worked on or being worked on. We can't just keep throwing stuff out and hoping it sticks, hoping it works without knowing what tool we're trying to use to address what problem. I'm also an urban planner. I've studied in planning. I did this for a living. Things don't work like that. You need a plan. You need people at the table at all times communicating and bringing information in to be able to study and look at things. So, again, I'm asking you all to please do your research. Take the time to look into these matters. Look at the consequences. Look at both sides of the situation to make better informed decisions for your constituents. Thank you and good night.
Ms. Zamer?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I'll be, I'll be brief. But I, I'm pretty sure we spent weeks, if not months, last year listening to experts, doctors, researchers, medical societies, leaders of institutions who have spent their entire careers studying fluoridation. And that is what I, and I think all of us who voted in favor of fluoridating water, that is what we based our decision on, not some personal beliefs, not some personal opinions. So, the idea that this is some, some sort of cult sort of science we're following is, is really kind of insulting. We had the leading experts in this field talk to us for weeks publicly. I agree, though, with Councilmember Adams that we clearly need some public awareness and public education and I think that that's something that we really should try to spearhead and make sure happens. But the, the fact, the, the sort of narrative that this is forcibly medicating people is false. It's not a medication. You have vitamins and minerals in your foods, in all sorts of things. We live in a society. We have public health. There are certain things we agree to when we live in a society and one of those are public, is public health and listening to scientists and experts. And me, I believe in real science and I believe that my colleagues do too, which is why we passed this last year. Thank you.
Ms. Keegan?
I just want to also note that I have reviewed much of the scientific studies that have been shared with the council against water fluoridation and I have yet to see a scientific study that shows that fluoridation is harmful at the levels that we would be fluoridating our water here in the city of Albany. All of those studies, great science, but they're looking at places and spaces where you have really high concentrations of fluoride, which is not, not applicable to what we're doing here in the city of Albany. But I, I just also want to note that, for those of you who aren't on the finance team and therefore didn't have the in-depth discussions with Albany Water Department during the budget, we pass this into law. It is in the budget. We have a million dollars coming from the Department of Health to help us build out the infrastructure. That work is not going to start until June, which means that water fluoridation is not going to come into play until late twenty-twenty-five, early twenty-twenty-six. And there is a public health, a, a plan to do public health advisories around the time that they will be, actually begin to start fluoridating the water. So, you know, again, I would love to see a scientific study that actually says that fluoride is harmful at point seven parts per billion, which has yet to be provided to this council. Thank you.
Thank you. And then, Ms. Farrell?
Just one other thing. I would recommend anybody ask your dentist if, which I'm assuming most of our dentists are in Albany County, if they actually report any statistics about cavities to anyone, and the answer is no. And the answer is no. So I don't know where they're getting their data from on rates of fluoride, like impacts on cavities or anything like that within Albany County, but there is not a general place where you report cavities to.
There's places to find that information, I'm just saying.
And one more, and, and in closing, folks, Albany Housing Authority, I just want to say this, because I think too many times we get burdened with things because we're not holding people accountable for mismanaging things. Albany Housing Authority is a separate authority. They have a separate board of directors who governs the housing authority, who governs and totally oversees the housing authority. And I disagree with it being put on our police department. If there's a crime that happens in, in, in the housing authority, the police is called, they should show up. The police, our Albany police officers should not be looked at as preventative measures for a private property. That property is private. It's public housing. It has a separate board, doesn't belong to the city of Albany, that's private. It has a separate board, it has an executive director. We would not be providing what we call preventative police measures for a company unless they were paying the city to do it. Albany Housing Board of Directors and Executive Directors have to look at their budget and put in their budget. It is in the budget. So then what's the, then what's the-
No one's signing up for it. I, I said that.
So have they put out, so they put out RFPs for security company?
It's been standing since it went down before. I, I said, no one's signing up for it.
When you say no one-
That detail where you saw housing, Albany police officers working-
I'm not talking about the police officers. I'm not talking about the Albany police officers.
It's the housing budget to pay for Albany police officers to be on the grounds, to work those details.
Why would it be Albany police and not hiring a security, a security company to do your security in your private companies? Why would it be, why would it be Albany Police Department?
Well, why can't it be the Albany Police Department? They're being paid.
I just told you why, because you, what you're saying, what the housing authority is saying-
They're not, it's not free.
No one's signing up for the detail. So then Albany Housing doesn't shift and go, well, maybe we need to hire a private security company to do this now. I, I don't understand it. I really don't understand it. They're going off of, the Albany police officers haven't signed up for the detail. Hire, put out a bid, RFP, for a security company to secure these buildings. Period. This is about leadership. This is about management. This is not about anything else.
I, I would invite you, there's a housing meeting tomorrow. Why don't you come to the meeting?
And tell the board? I will tell the board that. I will definitely tell the board that.
Isn't there a security guard inside the Housing Authority building that watches them? But they can't have them at other buildings. But that company that is working at the authority building is a private company, I believe. So it doesn't make sense.
Are you talking about 45?
No, I'm talking, yeah, the Housing Authority building. They have security when you walk in to pay your rent.
Oh, oh, I, I know what you're talking about. I know what you're talking about.
I'm not, I'm not the security for other people.
Can we get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
All those in favor?